The regular session of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas will now come to order at 7:01 PM. We'll have the invocation which will be given by Mr. Pearson followed by the pledge. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you. May we pray? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we are so grateful for the opportunity to gather here this evening to enjoy and participate in the democratic process. Lord, we ask for your blessings over the council this evening as once again there are many decisions to be made for our city and positive steps to move forward. Lord, we pray for the staff. We pray for our public works personnel who face it every day, our public safety personnel who are in harm's way every day as well, and the staff in all the rest of the buildings who work often in anonymity. On this evening, Lord, we ask a special blessing over Chief Eric Kaiser and his family. And we ask that you restore him to good health and return him home safely to the confines of Atascosa County. And on the eve of Veterans Day, we celebrate and salute all veterans living in past who have defended our right to live in a free society and certainly have ensured the right for us to gather here this evening. Lord bless this great city. And we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Face the flag. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Item number three is a roll call. Ms. Israel.
Here.
Mr. Sines.
Here.
Mr. Best.
Present.
Mr. Garza.
Here.
Ms. Pacifica.
Here.
Mr. Gairos.
Here.
All members are present. Item number four is a consent agenda. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special session of October 14th, 2014. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 16th, 2014. And C, approval of the flannel plat for RSBR school, I'm sorry, RSBR Pleasanton Second Street subdivision. And Mr. Metting, you have a recommended approval of that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garza, Gairos.
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda A, B, and C.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda A, B, and C. Posits in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five is ordinances and resolutions. Item number A is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 14-1121, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alley located between Crockett and Market Street on Highway 97 to Fifth Street in Council District 2, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purchase, purpose of purchasing said portion of the alley as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration. And ordinance number 14-1121 is an ordinance of the City of Pleasant, Texas, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alley located between Crockett and Market Street from Highway 97 to Fifth Street in Council District 2, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alleyway by, as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration, containing a repealing clause, containing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Mayor.
Mr. Gairos.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance 14-1121, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alley located between Crockett and Market Street from Highway 97 and Fifth Street in District 2.
Second.
Providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alley as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for final, financial consideration.
Second.
Had to take a breath in there. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 14-1121, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of the alleyway between Crockett and Market Streets from Highway 97 to Fifth Street in Council District 2, providing for terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the alleyway as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration. Any discussion? Being none, proceed to the votes. If everyone motion, please raise your right hand. Posits, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number B is second reading and adoption of ordinance number 14-1122, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Street in Council District 2, providing for terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the street, reserving a utility easement as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration. And ordinance number 14-1122 is an ordinance of the City of Pleasant, Texas, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Street in Council District 2, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the street, reserving a utility easement as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration, containing a repealing clause, containing a severability clause, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor.
Mr. Gairos.
I move to approve the adoption of ordinance number 14-1122, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Street in Council District 2, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the street, reserve a utility easement as requested by St. Andrews Catholic Church for financial consideration.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number 14-1122, closing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of Fourth Street located between Crockett and Market Street in Council District 2, providing for the terms and conditions of said closing, vacating, and abandoning, directing the city manager and city attorney to negotiate with the adjacent St. Andrews Catholic Church for the purpose of purchasing said portion of the street, reserving a utility easement as requested by St. Andrews Church for financial consideration. Any discussion? Being none, will proceed to the vote. If in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Posits, same sign. Ordinance is adopted. Item number C is the first reading of ordinance number 14-1123 of the City of Pleasant, Texas, annexing plus or minus 236 acres of land situated in the Nancy Maketa survey abstract number 565 of the city and extending the boundary of said city so as to include this property within the city limits save the excerpt four tracts of land totaling 104.267 acres for which a non-annexation development agreement has been executed in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 43.035 and 212.172 and declaring effective date. Ordinance number 14-1123 is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasant, Texas, annexing the plus or minus 236 acres of land situated in the Nancy Maketa survey abstract 565 of the city and extending the boundary of said city so as to include this property within the city limits save an excerpt four tracts of land totaling 104.267 acres for which a non-annexation development agreement has been executed in accordance with Texas Local Government Code 43.035 and 212, or point 172 and declaring effective date. It's just a first reading. Item number six is citizens' comments. If you're a citizen of or a taxpayer to the City of Pleasanton, you may speak at this time. Please keep your comments to three minutes and make sure that it does not pertain to one of the agenda items tonight and know the council and staff may not comment. If they would like to speak, we'll move to item number seven, which is departmental reports. Mr. Pearson.
Mayor, our Public Works Director's report will be followed by a report from Mr. Weezer once again on the Parks Department and we'll proceed to that point to the city managers and ultimately the mayor's message.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Evening, City.
Good evening.
At this time, all the wells are operating at 100%. Our total production for the month of October was at 64.1 million gallons with an average daily production of 2.1 million gallons. The utilities department began the eight-inch water main extension from Main Street to Smith Street and south to Goodwin where they tied into the existing cash tower main on, they're on Goodwin. This will improve the firefoil protection for downtown and will eliminate a large section of existing two-inch main. And then for the past two weeks, I have been involved in the selection process for a Parks Master Plan consultant. We selected five firms and interviewed four of these firms. One declined an interview. These interviews were very professional and competitive with one firm meeting all the requirements. They were able to provide us with a presentation that left no question unanswered. Mr. Pearson will be making, or yeah, Mr. Pearson will be making his recommendation later in the agenda. As mentioned in last, the last report, John Rainey and I have submitted the final lighting specifications for the River Park soccer field. We opened these bids on October 31st and will be making our recommendation for your approval later on in the agenda. We are still processing quotes for the contractors for the installation of these lights. The street department crews completed numerous work orders and continued mowing the entryways, rightaways, including the areas surrounding the soccer field at, next to the airport. The wastewater plant is operating at 100% and continues training the new personnel to work on our SSO plan. As part of our SSO, as part of our SSO plan, we still need to complete a sewer system evaluation that completes the public works. For the parks, our Parks Department has been working extensively to prepare our ballfields which are now being used for soccer, baseball, softball, and football under the new user agreements. This has added our responsibilities for the maintenance and setup. Jose and crew have done a great job of keeping up with the demand. They have completed the application of the pre-emergent for spring weeds on all the ballfields and grounds at the public buildings and have also been working on the weed control for, of broad leave in, let's say, Civic Center and City Hall. Crews have completed several repairs needed to the fences, picnic tables, and swings at the River Park which have been vandalized. We are also preparing to install do not enter signs throughout the River Park, especially around the playscape and the Main Street entrance. People are still not adhering to the one-way signs already in place. For the Parks Project for this year, or for this winter time, we are, we will be replacing the roof and the fascia and paint the restrooms by the playscape. And also we have plans to install new trash cans throughout the River Park and sports complex. And when weather permits, we'll be pouring concrete pads for more picnic tables.
Ms. Israel.
I have, actually have two questions. First one dealing with the playscape. So we're already having vandalism at the playscape is what you're telling me?
On the playscape itself, it was just a board that had come loose. But as far as the swing sets were around the soccer field, we had a couple.
Around the soccer field?
Yeah, around the soccer field. And then there was a picnic table around that same area that was vandalized.
And then I have one other question concerning streets. And that would be, are we at a point, once it dries up now, again, being able to continue to spray some sort of weed killer along the curbs?
Yes.
That, there was a, there was a small area that I know that was impacted and that was appreciated, but it was, it's an overall thing and not every single curb area is inundated, but there are a lot of areas that need to be addressed. And the last portion of that is, is a street sweeper working?
The street sweeper is working, yes.
All right. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much, sir.
Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
How are you all this evening? Mayor, you look great.
Thanks. I have an explanation.
Our new budget year, as you all know, has been in place for about a month now, but your city staff is in full swing. Due to the proactive nature of the council in giving us direction to begin the process and incorporate into the budget several planning initiatives back to the point of June and before, we are moving forward. There's several items on the agenda tonight where the feasibility study for the new fire station is concerned, the Parks Master Plan, and our Crestline to I-37 project. And once again, we really appreciate you all being proactive and give us in those directions back in June because we obviously hit the ground running and we're moving forward in those areas. Our information technology update, wanted to give you a little bit of that. We now have over 140 folks signed up to pay their utility bills online. We encourage everyone to take advantage of that if they possibly can. There has been a number of questions about the 10-cent charge and we just want to make that announcement this evening. The 10-cent charge for the online utility bill payment module is assessed to the city or the credit card carrying agency. They have to carry the width necessary to handle every active service in the city. And so it's a pass-through. The city is not making any money off of it and it was a part of the utility rate adjustment that was passed by the council in August. And we hope everyone will, will take part, that can possibly take part. And we still feel like that our target is about 750 to 900 folks paying their utility bills online after about 24 months or so. That will take almost a third, a third of the pressure off the ladies up front. And certainly a dollar twenty a year for each utility and customer, including myself and the others in here, is a small price to pay against the adding of personnel up front at a total of about $50,000 a year, including benefits in retirement. So we feel like that is a good extension of our existing human resources and we appreciate everybody's cooperation with that. We have issued the PO for the point-to-point or the, what we all used to know as a Wi-Fi system, which will be a private network from building to building. We were told last week when we issued the PO that it'd be about five to seven working days for the towers or the antennas to be shipped in and somewhere in the neighborhood of five to 15 working days for all the towers to be up. We had our information technology consultant at that meeting. He is beginning the process of doing what we need to do to do the termination within each server room in each facility. At that point, we will be able to process our business back and forth in real time. To step back a minute and remind everybody, sometimes the chief sends me an email and I get it an hour and a half or two hours later. Sometimes Elsie sends me an email and I get it four hours later. But out and beyond that, our ENCODE software server, which is housed at City Hall, any facility in this city who receives money will be able to process in real time across that ENCODE server. Once again, taking more pressure off the ladies up front. So we're grateful for that. Also, on our street CIP program, I'll let you all know, we are in full design at this point for the first phase of that program. We're very optimistic that we'll be ready to go to bid March 1. There's been so much involved with the geotech studies of the type of soil underneath these streets. And we were presented with several different variations of how to reconstruct these streets and we'll bid it out in that process and see what's the most economical for the city. The announcement of the household hazardous waste cleanup, I'm going to defer to Mr. Peterson for just a moment for him to brief the council.
Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Sad, this Saturday, the eighth, we are having at the south end of River Park down by Hunt Street in Caldwell. We're going to have a hazardous, household hazardous waste collection on that day. The organization that's going to do it is Stericycle. We've used more other things. They're going to be getting the bulk of the things. We also have Southern Tire who's going to do the tire collection. We'll have two 50-foot, 53-foot trailers out there to stack for tires. We figure we can get about 2,000 tires in the thing, so we should be able to clean up the used and discarded tires pretty well in the city. We're going to be taking pretty much everything at this collection. So it's going to be from old appliances to spray cans to tires, oil, all that, so.
What do they need to bring to make sure that they are allowed to use the service?
Okay, when they come, yes, when they come, there will be your police or representatives to check ID. They need a current utility bill and a ID, picture ID to match the name on the utility.
Is there a limit of material?
There are some limits on some of the things, yes. The tires, we have a limit of five and a size limit of 30, 30-inch tires. So there is a limit on that. The rest of the stuff, we really haven't set a limit on, but there's a built-in limit to what they can take. So when we get to that, we're going to be closing down those things as they come to the limit that the Stericycle can process. So it's kind of going to be a first come, first served, but we've made provisions to take a lot of stuff. Atascosa County and the City of Pleasanton are the two entities that are going to be involved in this. So anybody in those areas on the unincorporated Atascosa County and in, within the city limits of Pleasanton can available to all of this.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Pacifica.
On the identification, does the, the person bringing it in have to have the same name that's on the utility bill?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure it can't be.
The ID, the ID has to match the utility bill.
Okay. Very good. Not just the address, but the name also.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
And what time did you say?
It's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Entrance will be the entrance to this park off of Hunt Street, right past the river. So that's where the entrance will be. The exit will be out on Adam Street, so it'll just go straight through and out on Adam Street.
Okay.
So it'll be all set up at this end.
Other questions? Ms. Israel.
If you're in line at 1 o'clock, are y'all going to have somebody who cuts off the line? You notice I asked this last time because I want to make sure that I have every opportunity.
We are going to try to do that. We'll have some kind of barricade that we can put at the last, like we did last time. We put a cone or something on the last.
I didn't have any last times. This will be my first time through.
But we did, we put cones on the last car so that we knew who it was. And at 1 o'clock, we cut it off, yeah. Well, last time.
And y'all will fire me if I move the cone, is that right?
We'll come out.
I knew that. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And once again, I would like to thank Judge Batista in the Commissioners Court. It was about two days after that call went out to Judge Batista and the Commissioners Court that we had an answer back and a working partner on that. It is a 50-50 partnership and thank you, Judge, so much. We knew there would be folks that want to remove the barricades. The chief mentioned in the organizational meeting this afternoon, maybe we should put tack strips out there. But I'm not sure. Mayor, a couple of other, one other announcement and then a special recognition. The holiday luncheon for the council and the staff will be at the Civic Center at noon on December 15th. I know there's been a lot of discussion in the last couple of years. Several council members had mentioned to me that we used to have nighttime or evening time parties for families. But once again, when, when the staff was asked, especially the department heads, it was deemed that there's just so much going on and so many people's family and personal lives that the attendance would be a lot more towards 100% if you will, if we had it at noon. We'll ask again, once again, next year. This evening, Mayor, I would like to make a special announcement. At the end of this announcement and at the end of the presentation, I would ask the indulgence of the council to come off the dice for a picture with this gentleman, followed by a picture after that with the chief and I with him, and then Judge Garrett, if you would pleasure us for a picture with him, we would certainly appreciate that. Mayor, we recognize a lot of people. I've been waiting for the right moment to do this. The number one point in the strategic guide, the seven-point strategic guide adopted by this council is customer service is first and foremost. We emphasize that every day. Right next to that is that the safety of our citizens and the protection of their property is of utmost importance. About four years ago, we had a gentleman in this town who had two firearms stolen. They were not only collector's items, side firearms, but they were handed down to him from his father. According to the chief, these firearms right now on a just base value are probably in the neighborhood of $2,000 to $3,000 along the collector's value. Our police department worked the case diligently and with every resource they had and the trail went cold. About six months ago, the chief had a gentleman enter the police department and said that he had purchased a gun. He had it in a box. He wasn't sure whether the gun might have been stolen because he purchased it for very little money, but he recognized the value of the gun. Chief, would you check this gun? One gun. Chief checked the gun and it was one of the guns stolen four years ago. Gentleman said, please take the gun and return it to the rightful owner. With an interview with the gentleman, a name was brought forward as to who he purchased it from and our CID division, our Criminal Investigation Division went to work. From one person, I bought it to the next person on down the line and the trail went cold again. All the while, this citizen of our city sat in pain over the delivery of one of the family items and not the other. There was some movement in the case about a month ago and our folks got busy again and the coal went, the trail went cold again. But about a week ago, one of our detectives actually told the chief, I'm not giving up. I will tell you, ultimately, the case was solved, but it was not solved through a computer. It was not solved through criminal background checks. It was not solved by someone getting stopped and having it. It was not solved by running license plates. It was solved by old-fashioned police work. Technology's great, you're dealing with it better. I promised him I wouldn't tell him, tell everybody how he solved it because he said, you will give my secrets away. This detective had a discussion with an individual, apparently where the trail went cold, and the very next night, late in the evening, when he had already had his dinner and was at home. You were at home, right? Okay. He received a call from this individual. I need you to come to my house now. Response. His badge on, went to the gentleman's house and he said, here it is. I want you to have it. How grateful our citizen was the next day when that family keepsake was returned. So tonight, Mayor. Ernest, could you join me here? I want to announce so proudly from the office of the city manager, I want to recognize investigator Ernest Garrett for delivering the ultimate in customer service and police work to the citizens of Pleasanton in the recovery of a stolen firearm on November 3rd, 2014, this the sixth day of November, 2014, signed by the Mayor Clinton J. Powell, City Manager Bruce C. Pearson. Ernest, I'd like to be happy to present this to you. Thank you.
I don't want to say thank you.
Mayor, if we could indulge the council to come off the dice for a picture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, if we could indulge the council to come off the dice for a picture. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. No. 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 This is Ernest's cousin, sister.
It's a conflict right there.
Ernest, the chief said to get a duplicate made because he was worried about getting caught on the first one, so here's your duplicate. Congratulations. Mayor, that ends our manager's message. I'll stand for any comments or questions. And thank you all for that moment of indulgence. And Ernest, I couldn't be prouder to work with you.
Mayor, I have a comment, Mayor.
You guys go.
Yes. Going back to the 10-cent online billing payment charge, I get numerous complaints. I don't know if the rest of the council does, but I get them on a daily basis. I got one today. And people are saying that they disagree with paying for that fee, even if it is 10 cents, for a service that they're not going to use. So, I don't know if, you know, the rest of the council gets complaints, but...
I've also had calls.
They disagree with the 10 cents because they don't plan to use it, so they do not feel they should be paying 10 cents on top of their water bill. That's all I have, Mayor.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Ms. Pearson.
Thank you.
Item number nine is Mayor's message. I didn't forget that Halloween was last week, and I didn't stop by the Army Surplus on the way over here. I'm wearing this tonight for three reasons. One, it's a show of me being proud for having been able to serve and had the ability to serve in the military. The other reason is to let those who have served know that the Department of Defense is actually asking people to wear their awards and decorations. Just make sure you do it the right way, because I almost did it the wrong way. I was going to wear ribbons instead of medals, but the Air Force dictates if you're going to wear it on civilian attire, it needs to be medals, either large or miniature. And since I've never worn them before, I know that they're in the right order, but they, the placement was very, very difficult because I've never actually worn them before today together. The only time I ever wore them was when we received them. They pinned it on you, and that's it. So, I encourage those of you who have to display, to show that you've served. And then, of course, the other reason is in honor of Veterans Day. And with that, those in the room, if you have served or are currently serving, could you please stand? Item number 10 is discussion action to direct the city staff to assist Pleasant and Lady Eagles 5K run and traffic control through the city streets on November 22, 2014, from 7:30 a.m. until noon. And Chief, you don't have to get up, but unless you have anything to add, if there's any difficulties...
Other than we're going to provide support for whatever they need.
Okay.
Mayor?
Ms. Gagos.
Okay. Let me get to my page here.
I've got it.
Item number two. Go ahead.
Yeah. Go, well...
Somebody.
Well, Mayor...
Ms. Gagos.
Okay. I move to approve the, to approve the assistant to the Pleasant and Lady Eagle, I'm sorry, Eagles 5K run, fun run with the traffic control through the city streets on November the 22nd, 2014, from 7:00 p.m. till noon.
Oh, 7:00 a.m.
7:30.
Yeah. 7:30 a.m. until noon.
Second. It moved in second to direct city staff to assist the Pleasant Lady Eagles 5K run with traffic control through the city streets on November 22, 2014, from 7:30 a.m. until noon. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 11 is discussion action entering into a contract with RVK Consultants to complete a feasibility study for a new fire station on the west side of the city of Pleasanton. Mr. Pearson.
You all directed us after selecting RVK to bring back a proposed contractual agreement to do the feasibility study. On page two, right at the top on the project scope, you'll see that there's three phases. That's a programming phase. We will visit two recently built fire stations in the same type size. We're looking to build one or we're exploring to see what they did and get the backseat 2020 vision and see how they set their fire station up. The second part of the programming phase will be for the chief and I and possibly the city engineer and others to sit down and for the chief to have total input and for us to have total empowerment on how that fire station will be set up from the floor plan perspective. Phase three will be the rendering phase where the consultant, RVK, will develop renderings of the outside of the building, how it will be positioned, the type of fascia, if you will, and the possibility of some zerscape landscaping and a sign in front. Those are the three phases of this project. At that point in time, it would be presented back to council for the floor plan, to look at the floor plan, to look at the renderings, and to possibly get direction from council on whether we want to move forward to go to securing through a procurement process, a general contractor, or what we will possibly recommend is a construction manager at risk scenario, much like what we did with the Civic Center and library. At that point, then, we would move to design documents by RVK if directed by council and ultimately construction documents. Costs and methods of funding would be discussed at that point with the council. It's premature to discuss it now because the direction here is just the feasibility study and what it'll look like. If the council is in agreement with the contract, we would ask direction to sign the contract for the feasibility study this morning and strictly adhere to the stipulations in that contract and move forward to bring it to the council. Our plan is to have it in front of council March 1st.
Mayor? Ms. Sizra.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion...
Please.
...to direct the city manager to enter into a contract with RVK Consultants to complete a feasibility study for a new fire station on the west side of the city of Pleasanton.
Second.
It moved in second to direct the city manager to enter into a contract with RVK Consultants to complete a feasibility study for a new fire station on the west side of the city of Pleasanton. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 12 is discussion and action to accept a voluntary annexation petition from Eagle Heights Development Pleasanton Apartments. Ms. Pearson.
Mayor, briefly, the petition letter is in your packet along with the map, the survey meets and bounds, and the request and the certification from the survey or the request by Eagle Heights subdivision for the voluntary annexation of 3.69 acres lying in the William Moore Survey number 895 abstract 631 that is not presently in the city limits. Just to give the council some perspective, this is the apartment complex that is to be built right on the north side of Gran Zines off Airport Road. And the 3.69 acres that we're discussing here is what takes a kind of a turn back to the south behind Gran Zines. It's seven some odd acres in the total development. It's the 3.69 back there that they're asking for the voluntary annexation. And we would ask from direction to council for the staff to bring an annexation ordinance to move forward and annex that property.
Mayor?
Ms. Gagos.
I move to approve the proposed voluntary annexation petition of the portion of the Eagle Heights subdivision, 3.69 acres, lying in the William Moore Survey number 895 abstract 631 not presently in the city limits.
Second. It's moved in second that the city council accept a proposed voluntary annexation petition of the portion of Eagle Heights subdivision at 3.9 acres, 3.69 acres, lying in the William Moore Survey number 895 abstract 631 not presently in the city limits. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 13 is direct city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for consideration of the Eagle Heights Development Pleasanton Apartments. I think that's pretty simple.
Mayor, this is procedural. If the council has accepted a petition, we would assume that the council wants to direct city staff to bring forth the ordinance for possible consideration of annexation.
Mayor?
Ms. Sizra.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for consideration for the Eagle Heights development.
Second.
It's moved in second to direct the city staff to bring an annexation ordinance before the city council for the consideration of the Eagle Heights development. Any discussion? None will proceed to the votes. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 14 is discussion action to accept the recommendation of the Parks Master Plan Consultant Selection Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, back in June, when you all gave us the direction to move forward and consider, and have it considered in the 2015 FY budget, the, one of the planning initiatives was to develop a Parks Master Plan. We discussed at the time that with the city's master plan adopted a year and a half ago that has addressed all the issues as far as critical infrastructure needs, future land use assumptions, and those types of things, that it was now time to turn our attention to quality of life issues, namely our park system. We actually put an RFP out about six, seven weeks ago. We had seven responses. A subcommittee was formed between Mr. Peterson, myself, and Mr. Weezer, and we reviewed all those written proposals. One of the proposals in front of you all this evening is the proposal of the recommendation of the committee. That is what we reviewed before we actually called for presentations and interviews. We actually decided to interview five, but as, and let them come do presentations. As we went through the process, it came down to four, and it was one that voluntary said, voluntarily said, "We just don't feel like we meet your needs, but please consider us for other projects." As we, as we had these presentations on October 21st, the committee scored these firms and consultants on 10 different parameters during the presentation process and six different parameters based on responses to six specific questions asked by the committee. So, there were 16 different scoring parameters. The committee was well aware that this project will involve a mixture of planning, landscape architecture, and civil engineering. After each, each presentation and questioning period, which lasted about 45 minutes, the committee adjourned to discuss, and then we scored, and the scores were kept. In the final analysis, two of the firms elected to partner with other firms to complete the project. Two of the firms elected to complete the project completely within-house, in other words, the folks they had within the company. At the end of the scoring, and I will tell you that there were several firms that presented that day that has done business with the city of Pleasanton and are very well respected by this council and our citizens. But at the end of the day, the committee felt the clear-cut choice was Burditt Land Place Consultants. They have the expertise in-house for the planning, landscape, architecture, and civil engineering sign. They also have the expertise in-house to do some things that will possibly advance our city forward to being able to apply for some grants as well as do some other things to connect our park system and other facilities in the city. There was a great discussion because the other three firms are all out of San Antonio area. Burditt Land Place Consultants is out of Conroe. The committee discussed that at great length. Committee did not feel like that was a deterrent at all. Burditt also has experience working with cities such our size. They recently completed a study and are starting another study with Navasota and some other cities. Before any kind of decision is made by the council on whether to recommend, to accept the recommendation of the committee tonight, Charles Burditt is here, the owner of the firm, and I'd like for him to say just a few words to the council.
Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Mayor, and council members. I'll keep this very short, but I would like to say that the city manager mentioned that customer service was number one here. When we did our interview, the first thing, we got a little behind on the schedule that day, and the first thing I mentioned to the staff that was assembled here was that the folks out front made us so comfortable and were so friendly and so helpful to this. I've never had that kind of experience in the front end, and we have a lot of wonderful cities that we work with. Not only that, though, the staff that was assembled, and I would say easily 100 presentations and interviews, we've never had assembled the chief of police, the city engineer, the entire realm and across the spectrum that you guys assembled to help evaluate the interview teams. And so, for that, I really appreciate the welcome that your city gave to us, selected or not. So, let me just say thanks for that. Again, I'm the managing principal of Burditt Consultants. Not only do we have landscape architects, we have six landscape architects, a civil engineer, and we have certified planners, but we also have two architects, and we have certified parks and recreation professionals. And one of the things I think is missing in park planning oftentimes is the, I guess, the eye from a maintenance and operations perspective. And parks professionals are fine individuals that, either they come up through the system or they go to school and they're trained to do that, but they're outstanding people that kind of work behind the scenes to make parks, that, that thing that people see when they choose a community. Schools and trees and parks are what people are looking for. That and residences in the neighborhood. So, I would just like to say that we're real proud to have that aspect in our team as well. We're going to provide O&amp;Ms, O&amp;M budget for you guys as part of our, a part of our master plan. We also are including, because we have wildlife biologists and soil scientists and the like, we're also going to provide a canopy study of the community so you can see what canopy you've lost during construction in the past 10 years and so baseline what you have here in terms of tree canopy. And that will help you in, in planning for future plantings, et cetera, and to preserve and protect the trees that you have here. I think that the city is set up very nicely for tourism that relates to the trees that you have. You probably are aware of that, but sometimes you might tend to kind of take trees for granted, but you have such remarkable canopy of trees here, and the history that's with them is, is so important. And those all tie into water that you have here, topography, trees, great population and citizens. And so, the future is really wonderful for this community, and we're really excited to be selected. We'll, we'll do an outstanding job for you. And as far as why you would pick us, I understand that this council has a great number of years experience serving this community, and that's precisely the same thing that we have in our firm. We've got an incredible number of years with a diverse group of professionals that work in an integrated approach to assembling a master plan. So, there's no siloed approach to bring somebody in from here and somebody in from there. It's all done as a team, and we will be that same, in that same kind of relationship with you as council members, with your school district, with your youth organizations, your sports groups. Can't wait to get our sleeves rolled up and work with staff and each of you. And so, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're very excited to be part of the next four or five months of planning for this community.
Any questions? Mr. Gagos.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I move to approve the recommendation from the committee for Burditt Land Place Consultant to design and produce a master plan, a Parks Master Plan to include the elements and outline in the request for proposals with the cost estimates for the city of Pleasanton.
It moved in second to the city council accept the recommendation from the committee for Burditt Land, Land Place Consultants to design and produce a Parks Master Plan to include the elements outlined in the request for proposals with cost estimates for the city of Pleasanton. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 15 is discussion action to direct city staff to negotiate an acceptable agreement for the completion of a feasibility study, schematic design, renderings, and estimated costs for the Parks Master Plan. Mr. Pearson.
Mayor, this is merely procedural. We're just asking for direction to bring an agreement back for council consideration to start the project.
Okay. Ms. Sizra.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to direct the city staff to negotiate an acceptable agreement for the completion of a feasibility study, schematic design, renderings, and estimated costs for the Parks Master Plan.
Second.
It's moved in second to direct city staff to negotiate an acceptable agreement for the completion of the feasibility study, schematic design, renderings, and estimated costs for the Parks Master Plan. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 15 is discussion action to direct city staff, let's see, let's go 16 now. Discussion action to work with Pleasant and Independent School District to develop artist renderings for entrance signs to the city of Pleasanton.
Several six, seven weeks ago, Mrs. Several six, seven weeks ago, Mrs. Tullis, who is a coordinator with the school district and a Pleasanton native, wanted to come and speak with myself. Upon sitting down with Mrs. Tullis, she said, "How would you like to enter an agreement with the school district for our kids, our children, our teenagers, our young adults to design and possibly construct and build entrance signs to the city of Pleasanton?" I went yahoo. Miss Tullis, it's been on the radar. It was starting to bubble to the top of the list. You can't believe how much I would like to work with you all. A project born from our children. I'm going to introduce Miss Tullis tonight. She has a couple of the students here with her. They have a short, six-slide power presentation, and I'll be back to the podium after that, Mayor, to ask for guidance and direction from the council.
Thank y'all for hearing us tonight. I'm not going to take up the time of these students, because their, their words are going to be with what you want to hear. But this is Caitlin Corus and Jace Yamas, and they represent some of our students at, at Pleasanton High School. I know that when you meet them and understand their great qualities, that you'll know that we'll be able to fit something really good, good together for you.
Great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are representing Pleasanton High School's Career and Technology Education Program. My name is Jace Yamas. I'm with me is...
Caitlin Corus.
And we are excited to present an idea that we think will change the space of Pleasanton, Texas. We would like to propose the idea of a welcome sign greeting all visitors through our beautiful town.
So why a sign for Pleasanton? It's no secret Pleasanton is growing by leaps and bounds because of the natural energy and resources industry. This is bringing new faces into our community, so it's only polite that we welcome them from the moment they enter our city. Also, hundreds of people visit our community for different reasons throughout the year. From the annual cowboy homecoming, to the ever-popular turn and burn, to the newly-established market days, and the weekly livestock exchange, people are traveling in and out of our city in record numbers. We need to establish a landmark, letting our visitors know they have arrived. And finally, every great, great community needs a friendly public image. We are the town of live oaks and friendly folks, so we need to make that apparent through a welcome sign.
So why a sign by PHS? The city of Pleasanton has many options for who to hire to erect a sign. No other contractor would get more value or take more pride in a project like this than students from PHS. Rather than going to an outside contractor, the city has the opportunity to provide CTE students with a real-world project that will showcase Pleasanton for many years to come, a project that will make students proud. Since over 900 students every year are in need of real-world experiences before leaving high school, the city and the school need to build and, build and maintain a working relationship. This relationship will provide the city with knowledge that year after year, they can count on PHS to provide the manpower for future city projects. And finally, everyone wants to save a little bit of money. A normal contractor would charge for every phase of this project, but PHS will save you money by splitting on costs 50/50.
So what will PHS do for you? In addition to us, the business department presenting to you, the rest of our CTE classes are ready to provide the manpower for this labor of love. First, our construction technology class will design the sign and the process for building it. Our agricultural mechanics and metal technologies will build the sign. Our energy and natural resources class will install the solar panel lighting to light our sign. Our landscape design class will use a zero-escaping style using plants native to our area, requiring very little water or fertilizer. And finally, our life skills class will maintain landscaping each month. Each one of these disciplines is excited to be able to make a lasting mark on the city of Pleasanton.
After researching different designs throughout the nation, we have narrowed it down to two suggested styles that we think are modern and representative of our town. The first sign is a combination of stone and metal. We think this sign has a classic look that would appeal to all types of visitors that come through Pleasanton. The sign for Pleasanton would look similar to this one, but would have a place for the city seal along the top. The second sign is a combination of, is also a combination of stone and metal. However, the second sign is more representative of the birthplace of the cowboy. With this sign, we would only have one isolated cowboy on a horse made of metal and the word Pleasanton, or other words, along the rock. We can discuss more exact details on the design of the sign at a later date.
Deciding where to place the welcome sign will be a collaborative decision between the school and the city, but we suggest the entrance on Highway 281 South, right at, right as the road splits before the Marv Inn motel. There are currently several signs there from the various churches and local groups, so will have to be removed, but we think this location would be a great place for the welcome sign, because it would beautify the bareness of that entrance at the city at that end, and is a large enough space for a sign such as this.
The CTE classes at PHS want to create a landmark for you, the city of Pleasanton, that will stand the test of time. PHS and the city of Pleasanton can work together to create a design that would represent Pleasanton, as well as be reasonable enough for our CTE classes to build. Having input from the leaders of, of the city, as well as the leaders of our school, will bring forth a timeless, timeless design. Together, we can also plan a timeline for making this sign a reality. Because the time in high school is limited to a school year, working through the remaining of the school year will ensure the sign is complete by the time graduation rolls around. And finally, we can look at the resources the city has and the resources the school has, and we can budget how much we are willing to spend together.
Mr. Mayor. Have you finished with your presentation?
I have one more part.
Please.
We hope we have given you enough reasons to consider this, so that a project like this can begin soon. Let's work together and build a new face for Pleasanton. Our students at PHS are ready to work for you. Please contact the project coordinator, Lori Ann Tullis, to set up a time to start planning. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Something to say, but I don't think there's anything left to say.
Mr. Best.
Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I enthusiastically move to direct the city staff to coordinate efforts and work with Pleasanton Independent School District, Mrs. Tullis, and its students to develop several different artistic renderings of possible entry signs to the city and bring them before the city council for approval and further direction in order to complete the project.
Second.
Mr. Garza is second on that. It has been enthusiastically moved in second. The city's team made efforts to work with the Pleasant Independent School District, Miss Tullis, and its students to develop several different artistic renderings of possible entry signs to the city and bring them before the city council for approval and further direction in order to complete the project. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Gago.
I have a comment. The presentation was excellent, and it seems like y'all are ready to go to the Shark Tank, before the Shark Tank. Y'all did a good job.
Ms. Israel.
Yes, first, I'd, I'd like to say that it's been probably five years since that has been discussed, and actually, Earl Peterson, who's here this evening, will remember, I'm sure, that conversation that we had. And I can't tell you how awesome it is to see that we've all moved to a place five years later where this is a possibility, and how proud I am. I'm so proud of y'all, and I can't imagine anything that would be better than having you all go through the process that it takes to build this. It's what I know Pleasanton Independent School District wants for all its students, and I feel strongly that the citizens feel the same way. It's been an awesome experience to see you this evening. Thank you so much.
Mayor, you always say, "Home of the Eagles." Boy, that is a heavy dose of Eagle pride.
Mr. Garza.
How many signs would we have? Just one?
We're going to look at the 281 quarters, the 97 quarters, and possibly the 476 quarters. We want to make an announcement. Yes, sir.
That's, that's better. I don't want just one. I want a bunch of them.
Any other comments? Not proceeding to vote. As in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Mr. Yamas, Miss Corus, thank you all for taking the time and for being so community-minded in representing that group we pursue. Item number 17 is discussion in action to allow the Pleasanton Baseball Country, it says country, to construct two baseball fields on city property adjacent to the Pleasanton Pool in the sports complex area. Director of Facilities and Activities.
For council, this is, again, a few months ago, we, we voted on and passed the user agreements for the city park, and in one of the user agreements was one of the select leads, Pleasanton Baseball Country, and their proposal was to build for the city two baseball fields. One is a T-ball field, one's a baseball field, at their expense, and then at a later date, donate them back to the city and, and turn them over to the city for their use, too. I, again, at that time, there wasn't a, a place, or who's going to do it, or where they were going to do it, or any of the specifics, so what I'm asking now is that we go ahead and discuss and act upon where they're going to build it, who's going to build it, and what it's going to mean for the city. Pleasanton Baseball Country wants to build two fields. Like I said, their, their proposed place to build them is at the sports complex. Where the swimming pool is, this is the ci, the city swimming pool, the proposed area is in the black. They're going to build the fields, starting in, in this would be the, the northwest corner, northeast corner, and going back this way, the field would face out that way. Do you have the other slide? This is the proposed layout, and if you see down here in the lower left-hand corner, this is the field, and this would be the corner opposite the pool, and then the little field would be the T-ball. There are some other projects that they're going to do in conjunction with this, such as batting cages and stuff at our facility also. All of this is to upgrade the facilities out there. They're also proposing to do some groundwork and some sodding and stuff out at the park, at the baseball field out there. So overall, it's pretty comprehensive.
Mayor, I have some questions.
Mr. Gago.
Mr. Peterson, if this is going to be constructed there, how is the Little League, the Pleasanton Little League, going to have access to these fields? How is that going to work with our local Little League organization?
The Pleasanton Baseball Country is working with our Little League on all the stuff that they do. Scheduling, availability of fields, all that. All of the scheduling is going through the civic center now. The Little League doesn't have to do that anymore. We do it. So it's all pre-scheduled. They, Little League gives us a schedule. We schedule the rest of the games around that.
Would it be safe to say this can be treated like any other city facility?
Yes.
This is part of the user, this is part of the user agreement you all approved about two months ago.
And the intent is for them to build it and then turn it over to the city for our use.
It'll be owned by the city.
Right.
It'll be dedicated to the city.
So we have full access to it.
And would it also be used for practice fields at, whenever?
Yes.
Because I understand that's where the Little League has practice fields, and if you build that, you're taking the practice fields away from Little League.
Well, again, that's all been gone over with, Latisha, from the, the Little League. They're all in agreement that this is a, an overall better picture for the city. It gives them more facilities to use. It gives them better facilities to use. There's also, like I said, in this concession stand upgrades, batting cages, so like I said, it's an overall improvement of the whole sports complex.
And I have one more question. They will be paying the city $2,000 a month, and I say they, the, this organization?
Yes.
Why, where, I mean, that is for what, and where is that, where are those funds going to?
It's considered just fees for the, for the sports complex and the sporting venues, so it just goes into...
It'll go into the general fund, and a special line item, Mr. Gago, and the dedication for the staff is any additional fees through these user agreements will be used for the upgrade of the turf grass of the fields and for the park system in general. It'll be dedicated to that.
Okay. All right, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
Yes, I move to approve the request to allow the Pleasanton Baseball Country to construct two baseball fields on the city property adjacent to the Pleasanton Pool in the sports complex area. Total value of approximately $160,000, and for the staff to develop a timeline and terms for, terms of a dedication agreement for these facilities to be turned over to the city.
Second.
Removed in second to approve the request to allow Pleasanton Baseball Country to construct two baseball fields on city property adjacent to the Pleasanton Pool in the sports complex. Total value of approximately $160,000, and for staff to develop a timeline and terms of a dedication agreement for these facilities to be turned over to the city. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
I forget how fast you move. I would like to introduce the two people that are the principals in this. I have Fidel DeDegas and George Zapata is the engineer and the project manager, and Fidel represents Pleasanton Baseball Country.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 18 is discussion action to grant a variance of Title 15, Section 150.04 Ground Sign and Billboard Regulations, Section J3B4, 1133 West Oaklawn.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Here for a variance for a sign located at 1130, 1133 West Oaklawn, also known as the Village Inn, the new business coming into town. Over at the location, there's a height elevation as far as the, the property compared to the roadway. Our ordinance calls for 18 feet max sign height, but with the difference in elevation, it does cause hardship. We would think that it would increase the size for the difference of elevation for the sign to the, to the street accordingly, which is approximately five foot, that it would meet the intent of the code and provide the proper signage for the business owner for when people are trying to look for the business.
Okay.
As you can see on the next slide, if you would, one more, I think. Well, you have, or the, I had another one that shows the height elevation, but it's just a difference of elevations, so...
Recommending approval of the variance.
Yes, recommending approval for the freestanding ground sign, maximum height of 23 feet.
Mayor.
Ms. Israel.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to grant, let me get this right, I'd like to make a motion to direct city staff to approve the new freestanding ground sign, maximum height of 23 foot at Village Inn.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved to direct city staff to construct, to allow the variance for a freestanding ground sign. You're going to have to repeat it to me, Mr. Robson. I don't know where you got the, the item from.
At 23 feet at Village Inn.
Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Finances.
Item number 18, 19 is discussion action to accept the bid recommendation for the purchase of outdoor field lights for the soccer field.
This is item, I'd like, first I'd like to introduce Matt Carrillo. He's with the lighting consultant. Me and Mac, and also Johnny, we have worked hard on this project, trying to make sure we meet the, the lighting recommendations by UIL standards, and trying to utilize the existing poles there, trying to lower the cost, but also meeting the lights requirements. We went for a bid back in October 31st. We got one bid and the price of $47,506.60. Our recommendation is to move forward with the price for the lighting of the light field, which will be replacing the existing quartz lights, which total of 123 lights currently right now at 1500 watts, which actually is, how much would we save, Mac? Did you say the payback would be?
The payback's going to be about three years. The total energy conservation is going to be about two-thirds, so the lights that are being supposed are going to be about three of the energy that's being used now.
And it also comes with a five-year warranty, one-year free replacement if the lights go bad, which right now currently we replace the lights constantly on a maintenance, which kind of redundantly paying a cost that we should be able to put forward to the, the light purchase and save that cost throughout the payback time.
Sure.
So our recommendation is to direct city staff to award the bid for the River Park Soccer Field Lighting Package to consolidate, consolidate electrical distributor in the amount of $47,506.60.
Mayor.
Mr. Best.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct city staff to award the bid for River Park Soccer Field Lighting Package to consolidated electrical distributors in the amount of $47,506.60.
Second.
Direct city staff to award the bid for the River Park Soccer Field Lighting Package to consolidate electrical distributors in the amount of $47,506.60. Any discussion? None will proceed to the vote. As in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Council.
Item number 20, discussion action to award a contract for water utility bores for the Crest Line to I-37 Water Project.
Mr. Ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We recently advertised for this project. Mr. Pearson introduced it a little bit earlier. Of course, we're going from the water tower out on Crest Line all the way out to 37. This is a package of nine bores. We advertised in the local paper and sent it to the plan rooms and... We advertised in the local paper and sent it to the plan rooms in San Antonio and the results are tabulated on the slightly larger piece of paper. There are several components to the bid that we should note because it wasn't just a base bid. We had some alternates. Additive alternate one was installing water line from bore two to bore three, which is over between the Adesca River and the railroad. Additive alternate two was boring under driveways and drainage structures. And substantive alternate three was just using some slightly larger pipe for the two bores that are going under the river and the creek. The total, the total price for the two alternates and the substitute of alternate, which a substitute of alternate just simply substitutes two other items, but the total amount was With that, based on the attached bid tabs and the previous work experience that we've had with this contractor, it's my recommendation that the city of Pleasanton select M&amp;C Fonseca for that total price and that includes the base bid, alternate one, alternate two, and substitute of alternate three.
Mayor?
Mr. Best?
I move to approve that the city of Pleasanton select M&amp;C Fonseca for the total price of $459,390.96. This includes the base bid plus additive alternate one, additive alternate two, and substitute alternate three.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, the city of Pleasanton selects M&amp;C Fonseca for a total price of $459,390.96. This includes the base bid plus additive alternate one, additive alternate two, and substantive alternate three. Any discussion? None will proceed to the votes. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item number 21 is discussion and action to award a contract... Wait, we just did that, didn't we? Oh, no, we didn't. Discussion action to award a contract for the construction of a portable water tower for the Crest Line to I-37 Water Project. Ask Mr. Pearson, but I take it Mr. Meding will lead us on this?
Mr. Meding will lead us on this.
All right. Okay. Once again, we advertised at the same time for this project. We advertised for a base bid on a 750,000-gallon composite tank, which the composite tank is, the bottom part is concrete and the top part is steel. And there were five alternate bids taken with, this was, this had five different substantive alternates, with one and two being for a 1 million-gallon tank and number two being for a 1.25 million-gallon tank. The other alternates, three, four, and five, were for leg tank options. All of those bids are tabulated along with in Clint and Coats Engineering's letter of It should be noted that the recommendation originated from life-cycle analysis on the tanks, which takes into account the net present value of the tank. I know Clint probably understands that, but it gives you the present value of all of the money that would be spent painting and maintaining the tanks in the future. And it gives you one number that's today's dollars and that's what you base it off of. And I remember looking at that and seeing it was several hundred thousand dollars of difference, so it makes a big difference. The bid also established prices per gallon at $1.98, $1.67, and $1.41. That's the composite tank size increase. The small difference between alternate one and two, which was 102,000, leads to the best choice of the tank for the price, as it would not be feasible to build a 250,000-gallon tank for $100,000. The additional money spent on additional capacity will prove to be a prudent choice for the ratepayers of the city of Pleasanton. We initially thought that a 1 million-gallon tank would be the way to go, but after seeing the bid tabs, we concluded that the 1.25 million-gallon tank is the way to go. There is a gentleman by the name of Clay Viatrick. He's with Landmark Structures and I'd like to give him the opportunity to come and introduce himself and say a word or two to the council.
My name's Clay Viatrick. I'm with Landmark Structures. I grew up in Fall City and if awarded the project, I'll be the project manager. I'll be dealing with all of the scheduling, all of the procurement process, and then be the main point of contact between city officials and engineering. Other than that, that's about all I have as far as an introduction.
Any questions, council?
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract for the construction of the portable water tower for the Crest Line IH37 Water Project to Landmark Structures for the substantive alternate number two bid, the 1.25...
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, million-gallon composite elevated tank in the amount of $1,767,000.
It's moved and signed to that. Mr. Robosso, could you read that back, please? You knew it was coming.
I have it. It's here. It just was in the paragraph form instead of recommendation.
Yeah, when y'all get off either the recommendation or what's in the agenda, it's really hard to keep, because I don't know where you're looking, so I'm just going to have Mr. Robosso read it back to make sure we have it correctly.
Will you hand that to her?
Well, it's just part of the bid recommendation on the top and then recommendation on the bottom.
I have to know what Mr. Robosso's writing down because that's actually what we're about to vote on, so...
Yeah, it's that last paragraph to, and it's halfway through the paragraph to award to Landmark. There you go. That's it, Hank. Structures for the substantive alternate number two bid, the 1.25 million-gallon composite elevated tank in the amount of $1,767,000.
Is that correct, Ms. Israel?
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion? None will move to the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries.
I apologize for grumbling.
That's quite all right. I had to figure out where that was.
November 6, 2014 is hereby recessed to hold an executive session pursuant of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, as it pertains to real property, 551.072, consultation with an attorney, 551.071. Executive matters may be discussed and acted upon if appropriate in open session. The time is 8:20 PM. All right, the regular session of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas is hereby reconvened, 8:35 PM. Item number 25, discussion action concerning the contract for leased property at the airport.
Mayor?
Ms. Israel?
Yes, I'd like to, can I not go ahead and address all four items? I'd like to make a motion to dismiss the following items, number 25, number 26, number 27, and number 28.
It's moved and seconded to dismiss the following items, number 25, 26, 27, 28. Any discussion? None will proceed to the votes. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, motion carries. Item number 95...
I'm abstaining, Mayor.
Mr. Gagos?
I'm abstaining for the record.
Okay, review the bills, Mr. Gagos?
No, sir, thank you.
Ms. Pacifica?
No.
Ms. Garza? Mr. Garza? Mr. Best?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Science? Ms. Israel? Item number 30...
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded with adjournals. In favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Post the same sign, meeting is adjourned 8:36 PM.